Let's call this meeting at 5:01 to order. This is the Committee of the Whole for the Lansing City Council on Monday, October 26. And I would like to remind folks, under the new state law, that when Sheri calls our role tonight and in the future, if you're participating virtually, which obviously you are, please share with us the city township, county, city township or county, and then state from which you are virtually participating. So one of those three locals and then the state. So I recognize most of your rooms, so you're all from Michigan. I get that. But Sheri, if you could please call the role.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
I'm here, participating virtually from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts.
Here from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar. Seven present, you have a quorum.
All right. So the, we do have public comment opportunity this night. I will say there's a few folks here. Most of the items on here that are setting public hearing, those are resetting from public hearings that we were supposed to have, the meeting that we canceled. So it's just a public hearing. We're not taking action on those items. You are more than welcome to speak on them, but the public hearings will take place at a later date. And you'll have an opportunity to speak on those as well. But that being said, if you do wish to provide public comment this evening on our agenda items, please do so by raising your hand. It is Option Y on a Mac, Alt-Y on a PC, star six nine, star nine on the telephone if you phoned in. And then if you're on a touchscreen device, there is a raise hand function of raise hand button somewhere on your participants' window. So this evening, we are going to close public comment after the first person speaks, after the first person's three minutes are up. So go ahead. If you would like to participate in public comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. I'm gonna vamp here for a few minutes. Again, if you're on a PC, it's Alt-Y. A phone is option, a Mac is Option Y, and then star six on a phone.
Did you want to take action on the minutes? That was before public?
Oh, yeah. Why don't, yeah, why don't we do that while we're waiting for that to happen? So we do have minutes. I'm out of practice, folks. We have minutes from September 21st, 2020, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, I would move the September 21st meeting minutes from Committee of the Whole as presented.
Thank you. Are there any modifications to those meetings, folks? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the role.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. All right. So that motion is approved. I do see one hand up. It is our Health Department Director, Linda Vale. I'm gonna ask that Ms. Vale, if you would like to speak now, go ahead. But if you're here to address the ordinances, you can also do that when we get to those.
I was trying to figure out, trying to figure out whether I should speak now or later. So I thought I lowered my hand. I didn't. So I will speak later. Thank you.
Very good. We will do that.
I'm here to answer questions. So.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. The next person we have who has identified themselves as Sarah Morrison. Sarah Morrison, you have three minutes to speak and your time will begin when you unmute yourself.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sarah Morrison, and I know we have spoken about everybody's situations with the retirees and the benefits at the last meetings. My husband was a Lansing firefighter who was injured on the job, 26 knee surgeries, two back surgeries, multiple complications. He's unable to work, takes blood, issues with blood thinners, et cetera. He was placed on disability by the city and we were given assurances that due to the damaged health on the job, that we would remain having our benefits. These benefits will make it unaffordable with the changes that the mayor has proposed. Under Mayor Bernero, you know, the country suffered a huge crisis with the Great Recession. He worked with employees, the unions, the pension funds to make it stable. He took care of the employees and the retirees. Under Mayor Shore, we're facing another crisis, and that's the pandemic. Unfortunately, instead of working with the city employees, pension, union, city council, et cetera, he went around everybody to an outside firm. What did that cost us? And then he's hired a third-party administrator to collect the city's premiums, shop our insurance and pocket, whatever savings, I guess they can get on the lowest premium bid. Andy Shore's salary is over $136,000. That was raised this year. He's scheduled for another raise next year. That's almost four times the average median income of a Lansing resident, almost three times that of an average firefighter or police officer in the city of Lansing. They put their lives on the line every single day to protect us. It's five times more than our oldest retirees, disabled and widows. So I guess I'm struggling to understand how he can justify giving himself a raise, creating additional positions that have over $100,000 a year, while cutting the benefits to those that have worked to save and protect the city, you know, whether it be property or a person. Maybe he could take a salary cut, go to what the firemen and the policemen are making, have the same benefits. He probably had a contract when he signed on as mayor, but our contract apparently isn't any good. So I'm not really sure why we have to continue to honor $136,000 salary plus. It's just, there's something that just doesn't look right from the outside looking in when somebody proceeds without filling in any other department and goes outside and around it. You know, he has an opportunity to suspend this action and it's in the middle of our benefit year. We normally renew July 1 and come to the table and work with all of us. That's what Mayor Bernero did. Maybe he needs to kind of look back and see how it was they addressed the market problems and the pension and rescued that and made sure it was okay. Finding other solutions and choices. It's not, not just take the easy way out. You know, his campaign promise was to not do this. Either his word means nothing, and if it doesn't, I think that we need to start over. Maybe, maybe he needs to resign. Follow the money.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. I don't see other hands and oh, we have one more. And I think that we have two more, two more, and that, three more. That closes out, closes it out. So first, we will go with someone identifying themselves as Doug Rubbley or Rubbley. Doug Rubbley, you have three minutes. Rubbley, once you unmute.
Hi, my name is Doug Rubbley. And I guess my point I want to make to the city council is that I have seen and heard numerous times that Shore is doing this irrespective of contracts that were bargained for in the past. And I would like to point out that the city council has approved ordinances for both the retirement systems and they approved union contracts, which said, this is what you get. And so why bargain for retiree healthcare if it can't be implemented? You can just say, we can take it away. So council approved these contracts. So in my opinion, when council says they can't do anything, yes, they can. They can tell the mayor, enforce the contracts that were approved by the city council. And if not, sue the mayor. I guess that's my point. I think he's acting illegally. And I think council does have an opportunity to take action here because they ultimately approved all these contracts. So they can say, why are you not implementing a contract we approved? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is someone identifying themselves as Sheri Wegman. You have three minutes.
Hi. Okay. I guess I have some, several questions. Number one, why weren't the unions brought in to discuss this issue of taking away retiree healthcare? And what, what is the position of the rest of the city council members as far as the mayor's action? I mean, separate from his campaign promise of not balancing legacy costs upon the backs of retirees. You know, where, where does this council stand? Are they going to stand up to the mayor? Are they just going to acquiesce to this reprehensible act of, of trying to take healthcare away from employees that serve the city of Lansing? You've got police, you have fire, you have meter maids, all these people serve the city of Lansing, some to their own health detriment. And they're not getting any younger. And as I believe Sarah brought up, disability, when they went off on disability, they went off with the understanding that the city would take care of them for their service. And now you've got a mayor that's going rogue and trying to take away retirees' healthcare. Where are the checks and balances? Doesn't the city council have some checks and balances? So there's not this power grab by the mayor to go back on collecting bargaining agreements that were signed not only by the mayor, but I believe by whoever is the head of city council at that time. I think this is a terrible, terrible precedent that you want to be setting, especially in this day and age with a pandemic going on. And I guess, I guess those are my questions at this, that's my statement at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. And our finest speaker is someone identifying themselves as Stephen Early, retired LPD.
Thank you for your time. I retired from the city of Lansing Police Department back in 1997. Before that time, we had continual contracts that came up and during the negotiations on those contracts, we gave up raises for healthcare, especially when I first came on the police department. I didn't want to do it because of the fact that I was young, but I knew the older retirees needed the money and the healthcare more than I did at times. So we gave it up. And that was just not one time, but probably over a half dozen times. Point being, I guess, is that we didn't agree to have our contract unzipped. What's to stop the next mayor or this mayor from getting into our monetary value of our pension? The only other point I want to make is we spent a lot of time working on contracts and got decent healthcare at the end. And my point being that if you take away this, these health benefits and give us humanity or whatever they're gonna do, I still don't know what they're gonna do. It's gonna be a death sentence for a lot of policemen because of the fact that they can't afford chemo. Can't afford prescriptions, can't afford $400 or $500 more a month for healthcare that you're gonna have to pay more out of pocket. And a question to the council is, what can you do to prevent this? If anybody can do anything to prevent this, I need to know. If you can't, then I need to know that also. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comment on well, for this committee meeting. So the first item, I'm gonna toss the virtual gavel over to our vice president here so that I can talk about this resolution before us, Mr. Vice President.
All right, President Spatafor, go ahead.
Sure. So part of PA 228, Public Act 228, that was signed into law by Governor Whitworth a couple of weeks ago, a week ago or so. We have to establish rules and procedures for virtual participation. So we're gonna make it up for the next few minutes and then we'll have a resolution in front of us for this evening. There's one thing too, we, I was on a different board, the retirement board last week, and the attorneys for the ERS Board were also talking about the need for those rules. And if we, if we go ahead and do this, these rules can and most likely will be followed by every city board and commission. So it's important that we get them in place. They are before you, and there are some stipulations here. So until the end of this calendar year, we can participate in virtual meetings with, for, for whatever reason, starting January 1st, 2021, excuse me, 2021, we can do a fully virtual, a partially virtual meeting to accommodate absences for military duty, a medical condition which is not defined, or a declared local or statewide state of emergency or disaster. So the local state of emergency or state of disaster exception only applies to to permit the virtual attendance of a member of the public body who resides in the affected area or to hold a meeting in that affected area. So for Lansing, that won't be an issue. We will have a declared state of emergency and all of you live in Lansing. And if you don't, we have a different issue to discuss. So we, we are going to allow them through telephonic conferencing or video conferencing. We didn't want to limit it to video conferencing because there are some members of the public who do not have video capability and they, they can call in using their phone. At least that's what's in this draft. So if you're attending the meeting, you have to announce the city and state from which you're attending. So that's something that we did this, this, this evening. We also must include in our minutes where we're attending from. We have to put in our, a reason for why we are meeting virtually starting January 1st, 2021. Notice of the public meeting shall be provided on the city of Lansing's weekly meeting schedule and the meeting agenda posted online in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice shall include information describing how to access the meeting, the reason for the meeting being held virtually, instructions on how to participate, and information regarding how persons with disabilities may participate in that meeting. If a member will be attending the public meeting virtually, then the meeting notice shall indicate such and provide contact information of that member so that the public may ask questions or provide input prior to the scheduled meeting. So we'll use our email addresses provided by the city and our phone numbers. If any member of the public body is attending the public meeting virtually, then all votes shall be taken via roll call. This provision suspends Council Rule 36. And for those of you who didn't look up Rule 36, that, that pertains to roll call votes and it allows council members to request roll call votes on any issue. However, we will just do them on every issue because that way it is very clear how the votes are handled. And when we're done with this, I'll tell you what might be coming down the pipe. These, these provisions and procedures expire on December 31st, 2021, unless extended by the state legislature. And then the final resolution here is that the COVID-19 pandemic presents a public health crisis and local state of emergency, which necessitates the holding of virtual meetings in compliance with the resolution until further action by council. So this basically final whereas clause says we're going to continue to be virtual until we take an action to not be, which I guess could probably just be having a meeting in person, but for, for purposes of legalese, that's the, the final clause there. So thank you, Mr. Vice President.
All right. Do we have an official motion?
I would move the resolution.
All right there. The motion has been made by President Spatafor. Is there further discussion? Councilwoman Spitzley, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just have a couple of questions. Um, so the, these rules are consistent with, are, is this consistent with what's happening citywide or are these just city council rules? That's the first question.
So I don't fully understand that question, but I think when we adopt them, that's what all the boards and commissions will, will do as well. So Tri-County Planning actually, or reached out to me and wondered if the city of emergency for the city had been extended so that their board could continue to meet virtually. So yes, to some extent, every board and commission in the city of Lansing will be able to meet virtually if they're a city agency.
Okay. Um, second question is, the second question is, why do we have to, um, I mean, I'm in Lansing, Michigan, but why do we have to state where we are?
Because someone in the legislature really wanted it that way.
Okay. Thank you for that one. Um, and then, um, are we, um, I mean, do we, this seems like, do we have a plan for reopening City Hall? Or do we have a plan for reopening city government? I mean, is this, this, does this get in front of that plan? I mean, it seems like we're gonna, we're determining that we're gonna have, um, virtual meetings for the end of the year. Has that been determined that City Hall is gonna be closed till the end of the year or?
No, I don't think that's been, I see Deputy Mayor Harkins shaking her head no, but I'll just answer the, the question that pertains particularly to us. This allows us to allow members to participate virtually. So let's say that we do decide to open back up and go to SWAC for a meeting to allow for a bigger group, but someone has health concerns that they may have COVID, so that one or two folks can participate virtually. We need rules in place to allow for that to happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Boat, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Have, you have the virtual gavel back, President Spatafor.
Thank you very much. The next item is a resolution dealing with the LFD cadet program. And who is on with that one? I'm sorry, I don't.
Mike Tobin.
Mike Tobin. Chief Tobin, are you on?
Yes.
Yes, I am, sir. How are you?
And how are you? Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good. Well, thank you for inviting me. Well, members of Lansing City Council, first of all, I want to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. We have actually had the opportunity at the Lansing Fire Department this summer to bridge into a new program that is, I'll say, is borderline historic for the area. It's a partnership with the Fire Department in Lansing schools that allows juniors and seniors in high school in Lansing to take firefighter one into program, the state of Michigan curriculum, to become certified as firefighters. Our hope is as the program we're also going to include in the very near future, a second year on the program that will get them certified as emergency medical technicians. That's another hurdle that we're working on right now. It's gonna take a little more time to implement. What I'm pressing with this resolution, though, through the state firefighter training council, the city of Lansing has to give permission to this, to the fire chief, Greg Martin, register this with the state of Michigan as a formal cadet program. What that means is the program will follow the rules and regulations set forth by the Michigan firefighter training council. In exchange, at the end of the year, the students set for the written exam and the practical exam, and upon successful completion, they will be state-certified firefighters in Michigan. This program is at no cost to the city and the Fire Department actually has already been in support and working with the preliminary side of the program of Lansing schools. There are 10 students in the program. They're already doing phenomenal. They're in the program five days a week for approximately two and a half hours a day. And some of the, hopefully in the near future with COVID, as it gets better and we can get more people in to see the program, you'll all be invited to come down and take a look at the program.
Thank you very much. I know that was something that we talked about during budget priority season. So I'm glad to see some work being done already. Councilmember Wood has her hand up.
Thank you. Mike, you said there's no cost to the city. There has to be some cost out there. Can you tell us how those are being paid for?
Yeah, my apologies. There are some limited costs. Some of them are personnel costs on our side that are being paid for through Fire Department budgetary money to get personnel, our instructor, in front of the students. The majority of the program, though, was actually paid for by the Lansing School Program through some of their budgetary money. And they've had, last by knowledge, was three fairly sizable private donations to the program.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, Chief, how are you?
Good, ma'am. How are you?
I'm fine. Thanks for asking. Um, this is different, though, than one of the things that we were talking about, which is bringing somebody in kind of on-the-job training, right? I think in our budget priorities, we set aside dollars to do like an on-the-job training program. So this is, this is different. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are looking at numerous other models to open up to the community of the, of a entry-type program. We, there were some monies and priorities set aside through budget. Some were adjusted, some were moved, but there's about a dozen or so different models out there that we could potentially work through. We're just gonna figure out which one will be the best for the city and the most fiscally responsible for us. So that is not off the table. We just have a little more work to do on that.
Thank you.
I do not see other hands. Oh, Vice President Hussein.
Just very quickly, Chief Tobin, myself and Councilman Garza, we actually had an opportunity this past Friday to go out and actually, you know, watch this group in action. And let me tell you, it was fantastic. We got to see uniform inspection and equipment inspection. We got to see PT. PT, that I would have absolutely failed. There was no way I would have been able to make it through that, let me tell you. And then we got to see, I mean, some really intense training in, in terms of, you know, the things that the kids are going to see in June on their state cert exam. And, and I'm telling you, they are in good hands. So hats off to, to Chief Odom, to Chief Randall, to Chief Christensen, as well as I believe it was Captain Rivett that was there as well. They're doing a fantastic job with those kids. I believe that for a number of those kids that were, are participating, I think, in the program this year, a number of them are interested in becoming firefighters in the very near future, hopefully. And I believe that we might have an opportunity to keep them right here at home. So again, hats off to everybody involved, and I'm really, really happy to support this resolution.
Yep, well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. And actually, I'm very excited also. We have four or five of the participants that are already very excited about the potential of becoming Lansing firefighters. And any program like this is generally considered successful in the field if you can get a 10% to 15% interest in going into the career. And if we consider it a 40% or 50% out of the gate, that would be amazing.
Oh, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. And I just want to echo Adam Hussein, Councilman Adam Hussein's sentiments, you know, I mean, it was really refreshing seeing our youth engaged like that. You guys are running one heck of a training department inside that South Community Center. So I'm looking forward to pass this resolution tonight as well. And I'm also looking forward in November. I think you guys are doing like breach training or forced entry training. Sounds like you guys are in the beginning stages of, of your cadet program right now. So I'm definitely looking forward to getting back out there and checking out those, those guys and girls. So thank you very much.
Also, if you could tell Chief Martin, we all said hello back there.
He thought he could hide behind me.
What's going on with that back there? Yeah, he's like checking you out, making sure you're not, you're saying the right stuff and you remembered all your lines. What's going on?
I inherited.
At least wave or something. I don't know.
All right. You all set, Mr. Vice President?
I am. I would, unless there are other hands, President Spatafor, okay, I would move the resolution for the LFD Cadet Explorer Program.
Resolution has been moved. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Boat, if you'd please call the role.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Absolutely. Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmembers Spatafor.
Yes.
And I don't see Councilmember Dunbar yet, so motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief Tobin. Appreciate your time. Next item is a resolution authorizing co-council for Clark Hill for the election integrity fund. And I believe that Mr. Smirka will be explaining this one. Mr. Smirka, take it away. Oh, gonna have to unmute yourself first, though, Jim.
I like him better muted.
There's less rules to follow when we can't hear him.
Okay, I'll be quick. You're all aware of the lawsuit that's been filed in different jurisdictions throughout the nation challenging the grants that came down for the election. Chris Wulp, I think this council approved one before, and I think you have one on the agenda. So the city of Flint contacted us and asked if we wouldn't mind joining them in a joint representation. And we agreed to that because our interests are aligned. The services, there are no attorney fees involved here. We, the city attorney's office has filed an appearance on our, on the city's behalf. But we're also accepting the Clark Hill's representation for free. Now, since their services are being donated to the city, that's the resolution to accept those services free of charge. Update on the litigation. Western District of Michigan, I think it was last Friday or Thursday, denied the request of the plaintiffs for a separate restraining order. Today, I'm saying that it has been appealed to the U.S. Court of Appeals. So that's the status of the litigation right now.
Jim, I don't want to belabor the point because I think we're right here, but the, I don't see other questions, so I'll ask mine first. If for some reason, though, the folks suing us win, we've got quite a bit of money invested in, you know, advertising ballot boxes. So I've got a grant coming through tonight for HVAC equipment and things like that. Will we have to pay those monies back? How does that, any idea how that might work?
It would be a long time coming because we're just in the, what is called the days, and they're mainly seeking injunction.
Okay.
I would imagine they would want to claim you can't use whatever money you.
Right. And we got eight days left till the election, so I'm pretty sure Chris is going to spend it, so. All right. Mr. Vice President, would you please make the motion on the resolution?
Sure. I would move the resolution accepting joint representation by Clark Hill in a matter of election integrity fund at Alver City of Lansing and the city of Flint.
Very good. I will just add that, please note in the resolution, it does, it does state that Clark Hill is already one of Lansing's authorized counsel, so that we aren't adding anyone to that list at this point. Any further discussion? Seeing none. If Mrs. Boat, please call the roll.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Very good. Thank you all. The next item, so the next two items, let's just kind of talk about them together, if you will. One is the setting up a public hearing on a permanent ordinance, and one is the actual emergency ordinance. I think we've all dealt, maybe not. Councilmember Betts, I don't think you've had to deal with an emergency ordinance yet, but recall back, I think a couple of years ago, we had an emergency ordinance, sort of bringing all of our ordinances back into line for 60 days, and then we had to do with the formal ordinance process. This is one of those situations. The city of East Lansing has gone through and helped beef up enforcement of the Health Department, Health Department's orders related to mask wearing, social distance, I'm sorry, occupancy and those types of things. This is to follow suit. And as you know, our ordinance process is deliberative on purpose. But however, our charter and city city law allows for emergency ordinances where health and welfare are concerned. So the first is setting a public hearing to amend Chapter 602 and 602.11 to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote public health per providing for enforcement of local health orders or regulations issues pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code. And then item E is the emergency ordinance enacting the provisions of that ordinance for 60 days. So why don't we, since Linda is here and has given her time this evening, Linda Vale, our health, the director of our health department, would you like to at least talk about why these might be necessary, and then I'll have our city attorney go through the nuts and bolts?
I sure can. And Jim, I just want to make sure that it is violation of a state or a local order that is on your ordinance, because that is what East Lansing did. So just checking in on that. And so here's the deal. The public health code is complicated, and enforcing public health orders is complicated. All public health orders are a, basically, the penalty is a misdemeanor violation. Six months or $200 or both. When you consider things like wearing masks and gatherings and social distancing, I don't think that we want a whole lot of people to be having criminal records over that kind of thing. The other part of it is that, you know, when it comes to endangering people's health and safety right now on the spot, we really need things that that kind of cause immediate action or allow immediate action. Whereas right now, what we have is, you know, like I issue a warning, cease and desist, and then I have to work with the prosecutor and I can go to court and all those things. They're very protracted processes. Although injunctions of, you know, like a business or a school or something like that is a little bit easier. Within the public health code, it allows for a county, as we did, to have a public health hearing and develop a schedule of civil monetary penalties. So that is also a public hearing and required an amendment to our fee schedule is basically what that is. And allows for that civil infraction part of the health code. What we discovered in the process of doing that is that I can designate, designate law enforcement agencies as my representatives to do that. Very clear in the public health code that that is allowable. The problem is, is that your law enforcement officers, when they issue citations, automatically those get directed to our district courts. Something in the law and a little bit of a mismatch in the public health code between the law, and I've already asked the governor's office to look into this, is that the district courts cannot adjudicate them. So while a law enforcement officer might be able to write a citation, there's no place for them to go with it. So what the code allows is for things like a police officer could take a report within 90 days. I have the ability to issue an administrative civil citation. If they send me that report, again, we're not dealing with things like on the spot, like, you know, large gatherings in, say, East Lansing that are way out of control. And so immediate, again, immediacy is a little bit more effective. In addition to just having the ability for the whole process to just smoothly go through the systems that you all already use. So what the ordinance allows is for your law enforcement officers to continue to educate. First, our preference is always education first, followed by issuing citations if they need to, which then can smoothly go through your district court. You know, that basically gets the county completely out of it, which means all of the money is yours, and I don't have any issue with that. It's not about money for me. It's about keeping people safe. And actually having some way to enforce some of these orders, whether they be state orders or local orders. So that has been the biggest challenges enforcing those. When, when my two biggest cities get on board and pass ordinances that allow that enforcement to happen, I think we stand better as a community. We stand better as a region. And, you know, I know that we're trying to balance, you know, law enforcement actions that are appropriate relative to things that need to be in other places in a day of, you know, trying to figure out, you know, where that balance is with, with law enforcement as well. So I do understand that. But at the same time, we are talking about situations that literally put people's lives at risk immediately. And, and there are orders in place that are based on evidence and science that say that these things are effective and they work. And if we can all do those things, then we have a great opportunity to get through this, what looks like a second wave coming on right now with a lot of mitigations like masks and distancing and capacity restrictions. But if we don't have a way to, if we either don't do that or don't have a way to enforce that, we are looking at trouble ahead. Come, you know, later this fall and early winter as far as surge in cases. We are sitting here right now with 65 deaths in Inland County. As of September 1st, we only had 40. To put that in perspective, we had between March, when we had our first case, and the end of July, we had 29 deaths. So from March to the end of July, 29 deaths. We've had 25 since the 1st of September. We've also had, we're sitting here at 4,512 cases right now. The 1st of September, we had a little over 1,700. So we are definitely looking at a surge in cases, and we are definitely looking at whatever tools we have in our toolboxes to try to impact people and their decisions regarding these, these rules and these orders in order to protect our communities. So that is kind of where I am with that. I appreciate you all taking this up. I think that it will be immensely helpful to us as public health officials to have the ability to have partnership and enforcement. We already do. But again, law enforcement finds it a little challenging when they're walking around with a warning letter from me, and then we have kind of protracted processes to go through to get that enforcement into place. So when the Supreme Court ruled in early October, I can tell you that almost immediately, some of the safeguards started to fall apart. You saw businesses start to say, none of these orders are constitutional anymore. They shifted the epidemic orders under the state health code, the public health code from the state as well as local orders that we issued. Those were not declared unconstitutional, but there's a public mindset that they are, and we are seeing just drop off in businesses and all over the place with basically, you know, doing the things that we were doing very well as a region before. And we need all the help we can get to get this back, you know, into some semblance of control so that we can move on and, and keep this second wave from impacting us in devastating ways. I mean, you see what happened in March, you know, we had shutdowns and all of that sort of stuff. None of us want that. And I'll be honest with you, if we could get people to really just agree to do about five things, we can get through this together. And those five things are wear a mask, socially distance, which we're preferring to use physical distance at this point. Indoor gatherings should be avoided and should be small, 10 people or less in residences. And if you're not of the same household, you still need to wear a mask and social distance, even those gatherings. Outdoor gatherings, ditto what I said about indoor gatherings, although they can be a little bit larger. That's number four. And number five is wash your hands and don't touch your face. If we could really just have a pact with our society and our community that we will just all agree to do those five things, then we wouldn't need orders. We wouldn't need rules, and we won't need shutdowns, but we really need to do those five things. And because we don't have a societal, basically, understanding of our need to do that out of respect for others and out of protection for others, then we have rules and orders in place, and we have to try to protect the public in the best ways we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know there are some questions, but for the minutes, I want to just call on Councilmember Dunbar, who has joined us this evening. Councilmember Dunbar, if you could please let us know from the city and state from which you're joining us.
Thank you. It's Kathy Dunbar. I'm joining you from Port Austin, Michigan, where I just crawled out from underneath my building dealing with a water issue. So thank you for having me late.
We appreciate you swimming on in. Okay, so Ms. Vale, thank you very much for, for that primer. Mr. Smirka, we'll come back to you in just a minute. I do have, I have one hand from Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Ms. Vale, for being here today. You know, I have one particular question. I've been debating this all day. So we know that the pandemic is a public health crisis, but we've also determined that racism is a public health crisis and and we know that there's a disparate effect of policing based on race. How are we balancing those two things when we know that policing targets based on race? And we're giving law enforcement more power to then perhaps disparately affect people of color? I'm interested in your thinking on this, obviously coming from the Health Department and all that. I just, that's the question that I have. Thank you.
So law enforcement already has the ability to enforce these orders. It is just that they are misdemeanor penalties. And that's, we're trying to get out of, out of that mode and into, you know, unless we're egregious and repetitive and into something that's a little bit more. I don't, I don't know the word to use right now. My brain is full. So what we also know, public health crisis in terms of racism being a public health crisis, we also know that COVID-19 disproportionately impacts people of color. And the degree to which our society does not pay attention to these rules and these orders, we lose our people of color. Our death rates are substantially higher amongst our people of color. Our case rates were substantially higher amongst our people of color until our MSU students returned and took over and basically, you know, became the majority of cases. So that, fortunately, that outbreak is trending down, but what we are seeing now is the increase in cases in the very vulnerable populations that we're trying to protect, which is our people of color, our, our vulnerable people who have underlying conditions and, and people, you know, people in poverty as well. So on the one hand, I see your point and I understand the concern. But on the other hand, those are the very people we're trying to protect by enforcing these orders as well.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Linda. I appreciate all your efforts. I can't imagine you must be very tired by now. Um, but
That's probably accurate.
Yeah, but I do have to ask, you know, you know, what does, what is, what is Chief Green saying about, about this? I'm always, I'm always wondering about, you know, enforceability. I mean, it is, are they willing, able, resource wise, to actually enforce this? I mean, it's fine if we vote on it and we approve it. But if there's no follow-up or enforceability, it's like we didn't. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what, 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 what has the chief said about this?
So the chief has been supportive. You know, I've dealt with the mayor as well as the chief on these issues. And, and actually, once again, it, it makes it a little bit easier for the chief as well as law enforcement. Right now, they're stuck in a, you know, they've gone and, and dealt with the public health orders on the, you know, the health code side of it and the warning letters and all of that, which eventually get forwarded to the prosecutor's office. And, you know, the prosecutor has dismissed many of those cases. So we now are dealing with law enforcement that feel like they're wasting their time if they're trying to enforce it at the misdemeanor level rather than being able to enforce it on the civil infraction level.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I did before I, because I'm introducing this ordinance myself. Before I agreed to do so, I did make sure that the chief had signed off on this being something they thought they could handle. Just.
Yeah, I actually, when I, when I designated, I'm sorry. I'm sure you did. I, I didn't mean dispersion. I always ask questions that I think that the public is thinking about, and I can imagine that somebody's probably wondering, you know, Chief Green's not on here. What does he think about it? So.
No, and I did not take it disparaging. I just want to let you know that I did have a conversation to make sure that he was good. So thank you for asking, though. Councilmember Spitzley, thank you. Councilmember Jackson, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few questions for Ms. Vale. Thank you for coming on and thank you for all the work you do. And I can imagine that your brain is full with everything going on. I guess, did you misspeak by chance when you said at the very end that you, you want police to be able to deal, deal with it in the civil infraction world instead of the misdemeanor world?
No, I did not misspeak.
Okay, so I guess earlier, I, I thought I heard you say the problem was that when the cops or whoever comes around with like a warning letter. So instead, would they then take their, had tickets out and issue a ticket and hand it to them?
Yes.
Okay. And then also.
Just a civil infraction ticket, nothing, you know, similar to like a speeding ticket or any kind of a traffic violation?
Okay, so I guess our ordinance, that's possibly for introduction, I did read that it says, you know, willfully disobeying with knowledge is a misdemeanor. And then it also said, that's section A, then in section C it said, or, you know, disobeying with knowledge or upon being informed is a civil infraction. So would you, I guess, would that misdemeanor section be stricken if it was, if it was your way?
No, the misdemeanor section is still part of the public health code, and there's nothing that makes that go away. So there's nothing that within the public health code doesn't create a missed, a potential or the ability to have a misdemeanor penalty for a violation of a public health order. So I think the way you've written your ordinance, it's still in there because truthfully, it still is. But, but putting this layer in basically puts us at a point where it would take something very egregious and very repetitive and obstinate and things like that in order to, to say, okay, we've dealt with this on the civil infraction side. Now we're going to elevate this to a misdemeanor situation. So there, there, I mean, that's the way the public health code is written. So no matter how your ordinance is written, there's always going to be the possibility that we, we could bring somebody in for, for a misdemeanor penalty for, for a public health code violation. So I think that's the way it's written that way, and I think Mr. Smirka can probably explain that better than I can.
Thank you. I probably will ask Mr. Smirka about something. But didn't you also say that the courts don't enforce like the civil infractions? Our district court doesn't? I think I was confused.
No, what I said was, so we adopted a schedule with civil monetary penalties. I talked to my law enforcement agencies, including Chief Green, about designating them as representatives. I talked to all the district courts about basically adjudicating all of these things for. Um, I talked to all the district courts about basically adjudicating all of these things for us because, you know, if a law enforcement officer writes a ticket, then it's got to go somewhere. It's got to go somewhere to be paid, and there has to be an appeal process. So absent your ordinance, what would happen is your law enforcement officers would have to write a report in order for us at the health, at the county level, to enforce that on this on a civil infraction level rather than a misdemeanor level. So they would write a report, they would send it to me, I would issue an administrative civil citation that would then get that I have ninety days to issue. Um, and then if they want to appeal, they will appeal to my department, and then our decision is final. So let me point that out um, in terms of process. So one of the reasons that I want to to go this way is because I'm a health officer and I can write an order. And I can issue a citation, and I can hear the appeal, and my decision is final. I don't like that. I don't like that process, you know? So what we're doing right now is creating really fairness. I write the orders, your law enforcement officers write the tickets, our courts deal with the appeals, and their decision probably can, I think their decision can can get appealed to the circuit court. If the district courts find, they can appeal to the circuit court after that. So this really, I mean, absent your ordinance, I still can have your law enforcement officers send me a report. I can issue a citation, I can hear an appeal, and I can make a decision that's final. And I think that we are headed down a path that is a better way to go with regard to these.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Are you all set? Thank you, sir. Yeah, of course. Um, Councilmember Betts.
Uh, sorry, President Spatafor, for having a second comment. You know, I I've been thinking about the racial disparities in this, and one thing that would make me comfortable, Jim, this is for you. Um, do you think that you could, uh, submit to council a racial breakdown of the citations that are um, submitted through law enforcement in Lansing monthly, perhaps? So that we can make sure that there's not a racially disparate impact in policing on this issue?
Oh, certainly can. I can do that. I I also want to address that in the Health Director's, uh, Order of Number Twenty-One, there is a provision on the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act being applicable. That's the face mask order. So the question about uh, racial disparity is is there is actually is in the res in the, um, Health Department order.
Sure, that is true, but we know that police sometimes still, uh, have disparate impacts. So I I want to make sure that we're tracking that because obviously, if this does have a disparate impact, then we should cut this and think of a different way to do it. For example, as Linda's been saying, she has the ability to do these orders, she has the ability to do these citations, and if the police are somehow having a disparate impact on communities of color, I'd like to revert back to the old process because we need to make sure that whatever process we put in place isn't racist in the first place. So it that it would be great to be able to have that data to just look at monthly to so that this council can reevaluate.
We can do that every, uh, whether it be a misdemeanor or a civil infraction written under the city code, uh, of which this these two ordinances do, uh, we can track it on a monthly basis. We we have to do that to set up the prosecution dockets.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Councilmember Betts. Uh, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Yeah, I I think one of the things that Linda was trying to make sure that we understood is, um, uh, again, we have Linda who is upstanding in her profession and doing an excellent job. But if you had someone else in that role that would pick and choose a report that came down and would pick and choose who to issue a ticket to and would pick and choose who complained about that ticket, you know, um, all of that would rest in one person's, um, purview where, um, if in the court system, we'll use as an example, there were a number of tickets that came through, and the court saw that there was a disproportionate number that were, uh, minorities. They could be asking a question, um, at at that point. And there are different, you know, mechanisms that that could be in place. I, you know, I appreciate the fact that we can track them and and appreciate that we'll be getting that data down as well. I think the last thing we want to do is not, again, I'm not picking on Linda, but I'm, what I'm saying is having all those eggs in one basket and only one person having the authority to make some of those decisions.
Yeah, Councilmember, what I I one of the reasons that I was very interested in getting this done quickly is I I do think it adds a little bit more due process to this issue, um, which I think is incredibly important. But Linda, if if I may, you you struck something very important on the front end. You know, sometimes we're having people who are being obstinate and purposefully doing things just to make a scene or, you know, cut your hair on the Capitol lawn, those types of things. But the, you know, then there's others who are just, it's an accidental thing. They didn't understand the order. You don't want to criminalize that person. You want them to know, and that's why I think the section on civil infractions is important because it does allow for the officer to to say, there is an order, comply with the order, and at if if the order is not complied with, then there's a civil infraction option. Uh, even within the ordinance, there's an option to say, I'm not immediately issuing a civil infraction, but rather saying, after you've been informed that what you're doing is in violation of public health order and city law now, you you can have that civil infraction. The other thing I will point out, though, folks, um, Linda, you mentioned a state order. When we originally drafted this, it was in response to the fact that there wasn't a state order. So there is no state order imagined in this emergency ordinance unless Jim can tell me that I'm reading it incorrectly. Um, if we do move this out to the council, I would ask that I've that Jim prepare a formal amendment for consideration or a formal substitute for consideration on the floor, um, at seven this evening for to include state orders um, to the to the emergency ordinance, at least. We we have time to get the 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 standing ordinance correct, but if we're going to approve the emergency ordinance this evening, it should probably include those state orders as well, Jim.
Um, Mr. President, they are included.
They are, okay.
Yes.
And there are state orders in place. Um, there were just actually a couple of days there. What they did was they shifted to basically the same part of the Public Health Code. There's a section of the Public Health Code that allows for statewide orders or state health officer to issue orders. And then there's a separate section that are they mirror each other, um, that is for local health officials. Um, and I asked that, um, question because, um, I did end up rescinding a couple of orders that basically are duplicative of the state orders at this point in time. Because every now and then you'll look at the fine points in those orders, and I would look at it and go, oh, there's something now in the state order that isn't in line, and I can't be more lenient than the state. So I was trying to match them up. I issued orders before the state did because I was concerned with the Supreme Court ruling. And then I kept them in place afterwards because I wasn't really fond of the state's first order, but they did rescind it and write a new one. So we're making some progress. I was also concerned about, um, the battle that might happen at the state level over those statewide orders issued by the director of the of MDHS. Um, as things have stabilized, I was basically willing to kind of rescind those orders that essentially just duplicated what was already in place in the statewide order. So that's why it's really important that we be able to enforce the state orders as well as local orders.
Thank you. And, Ms. Councilmember Jackson, I do see your hand, and I'm not ignoring you. I just want to make sure this point is very well made. So Jim, could you point me in, uh, the draft dated ten nineteen where it specifically talks about the state orders? Because all I see is orders issued by Ingham and Eaton County.
Yes, and, uh, so what I'm was referring to was the reference in lines, um, dealing with the emergency ordinance on the first page.
Okay.
Line sixteen, well, uh, lines eighteen through, uh, uh, line two on the second page, referencing the Public Health Code um, by statutory citation and then referencing the local health officials' specific orders, uh, by number.
So I see that, but in lines, if I'm not here to argue with you, you're obviously the attorney. So I'll shut up if you tell me again that I'm wrong. But on on pay on line seventeen, page one, any health emergency order issued by the local health officer of Ingham or Eaton County pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code, yada, yada, it doesn't say or on, I'm concerned that anything issued by Director Gordon isn't covered by this um, because it specifically says the local health departments. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and I'll move on and stop talking, but.
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, we already have an ordinance on the books in the General Offense Code that if anyone violates a lawful order of a law enforcement officer, it's a misdemeanor. But I I agree with you. If you want to reference the state order in here, we can simply add to line eighteen, uh, or the or any lawful state order related to, uh.
Yes, if you could, if you could prepare that amendment, because I know we need to have it in writing in proper form before the council. Um, I'm comfortable myself personally, I'm not going to speak for anybody on this body, moving this forward to council and having a substitute at council for the emergency ordinance that that clarifies that. And then we can, we can vote on that at council. If if no one, if others are not comfortable, we can move on and come back to it during committee, the whole that will be everyone's decision to make. But I'll stop talking about that, Jim. I'm going to ask you to prepare that amendment regardless. Um, and then, uh, I'm going to call on Councilmember Jackson and then Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this is kind of a question, just a concern and question for Jim and Ms. Vale. So I'm just trying to imagine, all right, we're in Lansing, the order's in place, the ordinance is going, and somebody sees a gathering or allowing people in without face masks if it's a public. So do they then call the police and nine-one-one? And then nine-one-one goes through dispatch and says, uh, we have something on Pleasant Grove and Holmes. It's someone violating a public health ordinance, two people already called in. So does our police then respond and do the citation? I guess I'm just concerned because I've heard over and over that the police have so much to do already. So then we add responding, you know, and issuing citations. So I guess I wonder how is that going to look? Is it complaint-driven? Is it patrol-driven? Is the officer going to drive by and say, that looks like a violation, let me get out? Um, my next thing is, I guess this one's for Jim. Um, isn't it also true, Jim, based on how it's written and the fact that it's automatically could be a misdemeanor no matter what? Couldn't an officer see a violation and decide to do a misdemeanor or a civil infraction depending on what the officer uses, how he uses his discretion?
Yes, and then it comes to us, and if we don't agree, we kick it back. Uh, we have to analyze it under the law. We do that all the time. When something is not complete or doesn't fit the elements of a misdemeanor or a civil infraction, depending on what it is.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, but it probably still could actually be a misdemeanor. It's just the officer chose to to issue a misdemeanor instead of a civil infraction.
We do that all the time, Councilmember. It's a discretion sometimes, depending on what the elements are. And I don't mean to say they was they're arbitrary, but depending on the strength of a particular case.
Okay, well, I guess with the city attorney's office, kind of like, when would you uphold the misdemeanor if it's just the officer writing his.
Knowingly, the the language of the ordinance, knowingly and willfully, um, but violate. That's a matter of intent, a strong intent.
That's also the language in C, though, at the beginning.
C requires that there be a, uh, notice first.
Well, maybe I have a different copy, but first it says anybody that's like, anybody that is with knowledge or upon, um, being told.
Knowledge, right, okay. You should have ten nineteen twenty. That should be the draft date. And, uh, uh, under A, the willful intent is 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 there, the willful language.
Okay.
Somebody might have, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got ten nineteen twenty. I'm looking at, um, page two, number C. The first three.
Right.
Yep.
That's knowledge of an order, uh, but the intent, but it doesn't have the language of intent to disobey the order in it. That's in the misdemeanor section. That's willfully.
All right, so I guess the person could have knowledge of the order but still accidentally disobey it.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, I guess what about the, uh, nine, is this going to be upon people reporting a violation or the patrol and investigation? Street patrols, I don't know.
I think that's going to be a police decision.
My my experience is that people, um, you know, we get complaints. Um, generally, those complaints come to me, quite honestly, and then I will ask law enforcement if for some assistance. Um, certainly, they may come to you. We don't get nine-one-one calls over this. This doesn't, that's not, never happened, you know, in in all these nine months with all these orders and everything. I've never dealt with it on a a nine-one-one kind of level. So I don't imagine that our nine-one-one is going to dispatch out of that. Nine-one-one is a is a county function. So, um, you know, usually it's it's complaint or neighbors that are concerned or just patrol kinds of things. So it is definitely not a nine-one-one thing.
So they'll call a non-emergency number?
And I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
Oh, no, I'm down. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Uh, Jim, I think this is a question for you. If somebody violates, uh, this, uh, do do police automatically have the right to search an individual who doesn't wear a mask? And if so, is there a way that we can change this? I'm worried about some sort of stop and frisk sort of, you know, I mean, it's not stop and frisk, but, oh, black person's not wearing a mask. I go over, I grab them, and I say, now I'm going to search you because you have committed a misdemeanor. And then all of a sudden, we have more racial disparities happening. Is that something that can happen? Uh, if we pass this ordinance, is that something that we can write into law to make sure that it can't happen? Or what what are we looking at in terms?
We abide by Terry versus Ohio. It's a, it has to be an arrest first, not a stop and frisk. There has to be an arrest for a misdemeanor.
Okay, so a person would have to be arrested for not wearing a mask.
In custody.
And would we have data on those arrests as opposed to actual charges being brought? Um, when when you're releasing, when you're giving us that data monthly?
It would come into the, it would be in a police report if it's a misdemeanor.
Okay.
We would have that, uh,
misdemeanor.
Or else we could just, uh, I mean, if we had a certain area, we could always get calls for service if we know that the police have called to a certain area.
Okay, I I'm just, I'm worried about that, and I I need to make sure that there's something that we have in place to make sure that searches, illegal searches aren't happening because somebody's not wearing a mask. Okay, that's what I'm concerned about. All right, I guess there would be legal searches because somebody has a misdemeanor. So therefore, the police can search, and we know that police don't have discretion when it comes to black lives. So I'm trying to make sure. I mean, I don't know how we do this. I'm not a lawyer, but there's there needs to be some way that we ensure maybe this, the way that I'm looking at this thirty-day emergency ordinance right now is we pass this thing in thirty days, and then we ask these questions and fix this before the, uh, actual ordinance goes through. But I think this is something that we need to be looking at because I don't want more searches. I don't want more searches because somebody's not wearing a mask, for example.
Okay.
Well.
We can work with LPD Chief Green. For all your comments and.
Yeah, thank you.
And what I understand this too is that, uh, Director Vale has, um, it it's about really, I think, bad actors, you know? We've got a restaurant that is violating the order. We've got, you know, a a wedding that's a thousand people, those types of things. I don't, I don't suspect Officer X, Y, and Z will be walking around looking for maskless individuals downtown. That that, when I, when I, when I was talk told about this issue and talked with folks in Lansing, that's really what the goal is, to try and stem off those events where super-spreading may occur or outbreaks may be the real issue, um, particularly as it pertains to businesses. Am I wrong in that, Director Vale, or is that really? Is this about, you know, I'm walking down the street without a mask? I'm just trying to try to understand a little bit more.
Oh, it's it's really more about the problematic activities, like large gatherings with people with no masks and people who just, you know, want to be just obstinate in stores and things like that and not wear masks. Those, you know, business owners who, and you've got a few in Lansing, who just basically say, the heck with that. I'm not going to require masks in my business. Take that, Governor Whitmer. Um, and there's nothing, right now, there's very, very little that we can do about it. And when I, you know, get that, get try to get help of LPD, you know, they're stuck with that whole, you know, if we go down there and do it, and it's a misdemeanor, and it goes to the prosecutor's office, the prosecutor might. and it's a misdemeanor and it goes to the prosecutor's office, the prosecutor might dismiss, which, you know, reasonably in many cases, that's what happens. Um, which is why, you know, we're looking for some sort of way to have enforcement as well as due process.
I think that, Peter, your point is right, but there is an individual mask mandate in twenty or exit or uh emergency order twenty twenty dash twenty one. So when we do implement this thing, there will be the possibility of a police Lee uh targeting black folks. And then those people will have a misdemeanor charge and will be able to be searched because of that. And I'm afraid of that happening in a disparate manner. And I I want to make sure that that doesn't happen because though this is targeted, and I know the reason why we're doing this is for businesses, for these bad actors, that doesn't preclude police from enforcing the individual mask mandate as uh as written under emergency order twenty uh twenty twenty dash twenty one. And so that's the reason I'm I'm kind of asking these questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Bets. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I guess just to propose um to to the city attorney possibly, couldn't it be possible, since we are mostly interested in the civil infractions and we're mostly interested in buildings and like establishment locations? Isn't it possible to have code enforcement be able to issue the citations for these instead of police officers?
Actually, you could argue that code enforcement are law enforcement officers. But if we were going to go that route, uh, then I, we should also name that as what is known as authorized city officials under our code. Designate that in the ordinance. Yes, you could do that. Not on the misdemeanors, but uh.
Now, under the public health code and the way the state orders are written, we designate authority to law enforcement agencies. So um, you know, that that could get us into a jam in terms of enforcement because I don't have the ability to designate. Uh, you know, and Director Gordon has already written orders also that designate, you know, law enforcement agencies as well as local health officials to enforce his orders, which are also now civil infraction because they went through this process as well to make them civil infractions instead of just having the misdemeanor route to go down. So.
Councilmember Jackson, are you also?
Uh, I guess if for, since this is going to be an ongoing discussion, at least if not the emergency, uh, probably eventually with the permanent one. If we could just have like maybe some whether we can do it and how how that would look as an option.
I think that's a great idea. Um, and I know some Councilmember Bets, I know that's something you had you had mentioned to me in a in a conversation we had about this as well. Um, and I think that's it's important too that we're drawing a distinction between getting something on the books quickly um and empowering uh Director Vale's office to to have a little bit more teeth without criminalizing some of this activity. And then having that longer term discussion after the while while the emergency ordinance is in place. Are you all set, Councilmember Jackson? I see your hand up, but I don't want to cut you off.
Oh, yeah, um, I am. I guess if we could just commit, I'll support the emergency ordinance if we can commit to at least looking into that. Because, you know, I would hate to give the police more things to do.
Absolutely, and I'll ask Deputy Mayor Harkins to uh work with us uh in the administration to see if that's possible. And then Director Vale, maybe we can have a conversation about it offline um to see what what other mechanisms might exist. I don't know if you are quite ready to answer that question fully tonight, so we'll we'll make sure that there is a.
I I'm not. I just, I also know the way the state orders are written and we have to be cognizant of that. Um, although when you have an ordinance that pretty much overrides the enforcement part, I mean, it basically puts it all in. You've basically just said violation of a public health order is a violation of this ordinance. And so the way that you choose to enforce that ordinance, I guess, can deviate from the way it would have to be enforced under the public health code. Once again, it still could be, you know, law enforcement officers sending reports to us and then us issuing infractions, et cetera, et cetera. And that, to me, that is just not a fair process. I don't know, you know, I'm feeling like the queen, you know? Like I get to write an order, I get to issue an infraction if somebody doesn't obey it. I get to hear an appeal if somebody doesn't like the fact that I issued it and then my decision is final. So just didn't really like that. That doesn't sound good to me.
I know a few folks.
Well, that's why I reached out to you all for help.
Well, and also one other thing that I'd like us to commit to, and maybe we can pull this into the intergovernmental relations work while we're working on this, is talking with our our friends at East Lansing, Mayor Stevens, for instance, about what they are going to do long term on this issue. Their their problems are a little different having the campus community there, but we are a large city uh with similar issues. So um I think Councilmember Jackson is absolutely right. We need to, we need to have some 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 considerations in in the permanent ordinance and I would like to see some parity uh so that there's no invisible barrier between one twenty seven about what the rules look like crossing that, crossing that freeway. Make sure that we all are on a similar page, if not the same. Okay, um, so.
Can I uh?
Yes, Mr. Sprecher.
For the council meeting. Can simply add to line sixteen on the emergency ordinance to obey that's uh to obey, and I would insert a public health order issued by the state of Michigan.
Yep, Jim and I I appreciate that, but um our rules do dictate that amendments to ordinancees must be in writing, so I would appreciate if we could have.
No, I'm going to do that. I would want to read it to you before.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I thought you were suggesting we could move on.
Yeah. Then then I would repeat uh similar on line six on page two by adding or state of Michigan. So you you covered there.
Thank you.
And I will just clarify for you all, if we ever get back to executive orders again, which who knows? Um, this is basically violation of a public health order. So an order written by me, Director Gordon, collect scrimmage in Eaton County, those are the orders. When it comes to executive orders, we're in a whole different place because those are not public health orders written under the public health code. Director Gordon's orders as well as mine are public health orders written under the public health code. So that's what you're talking about here, public health code violations.
Okay, thank you. And uh, if we get back to EO, um, executive orders, we'll 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 have a different, a similar conversation. Thank you for that distinction, though. Okay, so the first item before us, uh, Mr. Vice President, would be the resolution setting the public hearing for the permanent ordinance, which would be uh for November ninth, unless Mr. Smirka tells us we need a little longer than the ninth for that ordinance. Public hearing. All right, so we'll set the public hearing for the ninth, uh, Mr. Vice President.
So moved.
Motion before us is to introduce us at the public hearing for an ordinance to amend chapter six oh two to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote public health by providing for enforcement of local health orders or regulations issues pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code. Um, seeing no further discussion, I will ask Mrs. Bo to call the roll.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much, everybody. The next item is, of course, the actual emergency ordinance that we've just discussed at length. Um, a- as we, as we know, we are expecting a substitute or an amendment to that uh for council um to add state orders. So if you're comfortable moving forward, I would call, uh, ask for a motion to move the or emergency ordinance forward.
Doesn't Spatterfor, I would move the emergency ordinance.
Very good. Is there further discussion on the emergency ordinance? Seeing now, Mrs. Bo, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much, everybody. This will be on uh for action this evening. Uh, the next item is a resolution resetting the public hearing on the Lansing Economic Development Corporation's Downtown Lansing Riverfront Project related to the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club. Um, I can't remember uh when that is set to come up. That is also going to be on.
November ninth.
November ninth. Thank you, Mrs. Bo. Uh, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. Am I unmuted? I am unmuted. Okay. Um, I would move the resolution uh to reset the public hearing. Again, this this would be for November ninth. This is for the Lansing Economic Development Corporation Downtown Lansing Riverfront Project, Lansing Shuffle Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC.
Motion before us, um. I'll just note that the reason we're doing this again was because of our um previously scheduled meetings that were canceled due to uncertainties around virtual meetings and um wanting to obey uh public health orders. So uh without any further discussion, Mrs. Bo, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution uh setting a public hearing for the lease agreement with the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club for November ninth, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, I would move the resolution. Again, this is setting a public hearing for the lease agreement this time around. Uh, and this would also be for November ninth. This is the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC three twenty five Riverfront Drive.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, if the clerk, uh, Mrs. Bo, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. And the final um public hearing, which we are resetting, is for November ninth related to the um Montgomery Drain Project that uh we, notice has already been given to the residents on the roll. And I will say too that uh Councilmember Betts, myself and Mr. Kilpatrick from Public Service had a um nice evening uh meeting with several residents uh with many, many questions about the the process, uh what's happened, uh many questions that we'd heard at public comment as well um that we we hopefully were able to provide some clarity, met with those folks. Um, I'm not sure everyone walked away pleased, but I'm I think a little maybe better informed after that meeting, and I really appreciate everyone making time for that. So I'll I'll take a motion to put it before us and then we'll open up the discussion, Mr. Vice President.
So moved. Um, the only thing I would add is that the public hearing would be again November ninth at seven P M.
Thank you. All right, there is a motion before us. I see Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatterfor. I'm just uh wondering if we're going to be are sending out notice of the new public hearing.
Yes, and I actually talked to Public Service about that to make sure they had enough time between now and the ninth to get those out. Um, Sherry and I were going to send out our own, but I think I think there were thirty eight hundred or something along those lines. So we're just gonna leave it to Public Service here, but uh they're gonna get that out, make sure it's well known. We'll do a little bit of, I'm going to ask um city uh administration to put a little bit of notice out on the public uh public facing uh social media. We'll have it on our website as well. And I know that uh there's a few reporters sitting here listening, uh so they will uh undoubtedly report it as well. So we'll make sure that 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 it is well known. And the assessment role hasn't changed. That folks had already been notified about that, so they'll know about it and I is, um, but we'll make sure that they get they that it's out.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood.
Just to follow up with that, I see um Andy Kilpatrick is um on the call, on the meeting. Um, Andy, are these sent out in a letter or a postcard?
So we will probably be sending, we sent the original out in a letter that had information. Um, we're trying to figure out for the revised one. We believe we will send out a postcard if we're able to put enough information on the postcard. Otherwise, we will send out the update in a letter as well.
My my only concern right now is um campaign stuff that everybody is getting and a a concern that a postcard could be pitched instead of a letter with the city um return address on it might be something that would be recognized uh better than um just a postcard out there. So I I would, I would urge you to think about that when you're thinking about this mailing.
Okay, we will definitely take that under advisement. And I want to say for me personally, I get postcard, large postcards and letters on campaign stuff, and most of those go in the trash. So um it's it's a point well made.
Uh, Mr. Kilpatrick, I assume you meant in the recycling?
I did. Yes, yes, recycling bin, correct. Sorry about that.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, um, we do have to vote on this, this resetting the public hearing for November ninth. So I see no further discussion, Mrs. Bo. Please call the roll.
I I have.
Sorry, uh, Sherry, Carol.
Just one quick question. Anyone that has turned in a letter or emailed us with concerns already about the assessment, thinking that we were having that hearing, those will be considered as part of the public record?
Yes.
For, okay, I just want so anybody listening, they don't have to send in another one if they've sent in information already.
No, only if they're interested in making sure the postal service gets enough revenue, but we will keep all of that as part of this record when it's considered for the appeals.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Now, seeing no further, Mrs. Mrs. Bo, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor?
Yes.
Motion to reset the public hearing passes eight zero.
Thank you all very much. Um, I see no hands and no further business before the committee of the whole. So we will stand adjourned until council at seven P M. Thank you all. Have a good evening or well, thirty three minutes.